That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It is Thursday, November sixth, two thousand twenty-five. I call this meeting of the Trophy Club zoning board of adjustment to order at six oh one P M. Let the road record show that a quorum is present, even though we have a empty seat. We have five. Okay, public comments. Chairman, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five, five, one dot zero, zero, seven. The board may not discuss or take action on the matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will have up to three minutes for the time determined by the presiding officer. Jackie, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
Perfect.
Oh, I'm so sorry. The mayor does.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and good evening to our guests in the audience. But I just want to say it's the mayor of Trophy Club representing the council. Thank you for your service, and I always like to come to the first couple of meetings of our new board. Me, uh, board members to see what we put together. And it's just wonderful. It's, it's wonderful to see Jade here as well as David. And Daniel has moved up into the world, so that's a pretty good deal. He's now permanently a member of the board. And we just thank you for your service, and it's very important that you stay connected. And we ask that you have the op, look for other opportunities to serve the town. And I'm just going to say right up front, many times you will see surveys come out. Please support the surveys and go to your neighbor and say, would you respond to this survey? Because that's a way we get feedback from our community, and we spend a lot of effort and time to go out into the community, ask for help and feedback. Thank you very much for your service. God bless you, and God bless Trophy Club. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, and I echo Mayor's comments about being on the board. Welcome to the board. For you, those not here, those three new board members, Daniel, David, and Jay, Jaden, I'm sorry, all were previously sworn in before the meeting started. So thank you for that, and thank you for your service. Agenda number one is introduction of the new members and board orientation, presented by Matt Cox, our Director of Community Development. Take it away, Matt.
All right, good evening, commissioners. So the process of this, just kind of bear with me. I'm going to go through general roles, responsibilities of both different boards. So if you don't know it, you're also on the Building Standard Committee. All right, overview. So the Z B A there, y'all are a quasi judicial body. What that means is basically you, you, it's like a little court. So, and we'll get into this later, but to appeal, if somebody wants to appeal your decision, it does not go to council, it goes to the county, county court. Okay, we'll get through this. So Z B A authorized to make special exceptions to the terms of the city zoning ordinance, consistent with its general purpose and intent. If y'all have any questions, just stop. We've, we've gone over these for years, but for anybody new or just has a question on something, then just, just please interrupt. Consist of five regular members and four alternates, appointed by town council for two-year terms. Chairperson selected by town council. So town council selected Mr. Bowman to be chair. And in just a few minutes, the first meeting that we have, y'all will select the vice chair. So authority. Hear and decide appeals alleging errors and administrative decisions. So it doesn't happen as often anymore. Fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years ago, inspectors, building officials, they're out in the field. They, they, they interpret the code a certain way. And if the builder, let's say it's going to cost them a bunch of money, and, and, and the inspector says no, the code reads X, Y, Z, you're going to need to do it this way. They have to have an appeal process, so the appeal would come to this group. So in, in our world and here in Trophy Club, if the inspector makes a decision, and then I back his decision because I'm also acting building official, then their appeal would be coming to Z B A. My point is that it doesn't happen as often anymore because really the last fifteens or so years, each of the code cycles, which is every three years, they've really tried to, those gray areas, make them a lot more black and white. So you, you just don't see a lot of builders and developers coming in and appealing our decisions anymore. And it also drags out the process. If they want to hurry, then they might as well just do what we say instead of wait thirty or forty-five days. Next one, hear and decide special exceptions as outlined in the zoning ordinances. We've got that this evening. Address other matters as authorized by city ordinances. Special exceptions and variances, these are just definitions. Special exception, this is going to be more in the P N Z and council, but this is specific permission outlined in the zoning ordinance. Variances is what y'all see pretty much every meeting. Approval to deviate from the zoning requirements due to unnecessary hardship. Conditions of variances include financial cost of compliance, property loss, and unreasonable encroachments. Meetings and votings. Meetings are held on an as-needed basis, so typically it's the second Thursday of every month. The reason we had these P N Z and Z B A flip-flopped is I have to have less than thirty days from a P N Z meeting to a council meeting. And since we only have one council meeting in December, that's why, the reason we had to flip them. But typically, second Thursday of every month, and if we don't have one, you won't hear from us. But if we do have one, then Jackie and I will send an email out saying we've got something coming. So, because it's been a couple months, probably, a lot of times we'll go two or three months in between meetings. A quorum, at least four members must be present for the quorum. Decisions require, and so this is different, decisions require a supermajority vote of seventy-five percent of the members. So if we have four, I have to have four votes. If we have five, I still have, we still need four votes to pass. So even if a member's not here, and we only have four up there, I don't think any of y'all were on the board, but maybe two or three years ago, we just had four people up. And so I, I let the applicant know if one person denies this, it's, it's not three out of four. If one of those four, so your option is, let's go through with it, or you can pull the item to the next month. We, I like to have five up here. It just, it makes it better, so just keep that in mind. Decisions require supermajority. So that's different than Building Standard Committee. Appeals and limitations. Appeals may be filed with the state district court, county court, or county court of law. So again, if someone does not like the decision that y'all make, it does not go to council. They've got to take it to Denton County Court. Petitions must clearly state the decision was unlawful and identify specific grounds for appeal. And Z B A's authority is limited by law, cannot amend or override established ordinances. So that would be P N Z and council would be amending or changing ordinances. Okay, now let's switch to Building Standard Committee. So established under Article three point one five of the Towns Code, they're created to address violations of building and safety ordinances. So this is going to be more of like code enforcement. I think we've got that in here. Appointed by two, by town council for two years. Commission shall be compromise comprised of same members of Z B A. Meetings and procedures, they're, they, these are also held on as-needed basis. I think our last one was about a year and a half ago. They just don't come up very often. All meetings, of course, are subject to Texas Meeting, Opens Meeting Act. Quorum is four, and decisions require a majority vote of members present. So that would be if there's four up here and three say yes, one says no, it still passes. Their authority, so they hear, Building Standard Committee, they hear and decide cases on violations of ordinances related to safety and property standards. They review proposed amendments to the building and fire codes, provide guidance to the building official and fire chief, and issue orders to address substandard structures. That last one is what we use Building Standard Committee the most. If y'all recall, maybe two years ago, the house over there on Oak Hill that was falling down the hill into the golf course. So that's where we brought that, and so they have the ability to say, you've got thirty days to do this, you've got ninety days to do this, period, we need this demoed, so. Addressing substandard structures, so as I just talked about, the structures are deemed substandard if they fail to meet minimum standards or pose a safety hazard. The commission may order repairs, demo, and/or other necessary actions. And then property and owners, they may be subject to penalties for non-compliance. So rules and notifications. Rules of proceedings ensure fair hearing and allow evidence presentation. So on those, we, we do public notices, but then we also allow the applicant to come up. And, and that's where Building Standard Committee, they can, they can work things out. If it's, on that particular instance, there was, they were leaning towards thirty days and then demo, but then when the applicant came up, they said, well, we've got a couple more court things to go through, and so ninety days will be better, and so that's what they went with. Notifications are sent to property owners and lien holders regarding the hearings, and public notices must be published in advance of hearings. Civil penal, penalties, up to a thousand a day, ten dollars a day for homesteads. Town may assess cost and place liens for non-compliance. And again, decisions can be appealed to district courts. Okay, so that's the end of that. The town does appreciate the time, dedication, and thoughtful service of each volunteer who contributes to maintaining the fairness and consistency of our zoning process. And just like the mayor said, and, and Jackie and I, we, we, we need this process, we appreciate it, and probably the most important thing for us is just attendance. And so just, you know, putting those dates on the calendar will absolutely let you know, you know, that something's coming up as soon as we get it, and it's usually thirty to forty days prior to the meeting. So we give you plenty heads up, but we know things come up. Okay, that's the end of that. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Agenda item number two tonight is consider appointment of vice chair for the zoning board of adjustments. You know, got a lot of newbies here, and I appreciate everything, y'all. But I think one of the things that would be nice is if we could have someone that has a little bit of experience. Anybody have any ideas on who should be our vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Stephen.
I'll second that.
Thank you, thank you. What is it, is there a motion? Yes, is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Stephen, congratulations.
Appreciate it.
That's what happens when you're the only one with experience here tonight. Okay, the motion carries. I hereby declare Stephen Bodecker, place, what are you, number two? What are you? Yep, place number two as vice chair of the zoning board. Agenda item number three. Case number Z B A dash twenty-five dash zero, zero, five, twenty-seven, twenty-one Trophy Club Drive. Agenda, conduct a public hearing and consider action regarding requests by homeowner John Schrober for a special exemption to section fourteen dot zero, two, dot three, five, one. Fencing and retaining walls and screening of town zoning ordinance to allow a fence to be constructed within four feet of the front elevation along the eastern side of the home at twenty-seven, twenty-one Trophy Club Drive, Trophy Club, Denton, Texas. The time is six sixteen P M. I now open the public hearing. The staff report will be conducted by Matt Cox, Director of Community Development. I'm sorry.
All right, good evening again. All right, as you stated, the property owner, Mr. Schrober, they submitted a request for a special exception. You've got special exceptions in section fourteen point oh two, three, five, one for fencing retaining walls and screening in the town zoning ordinance. The request is to allow the installation of a five-foot-high wrought iron fence to be located within four feet of the home's front elevation. We've got, sometimes photos speak a thousand words. So my cursor, here we go. All right, so the, the request would be is for this left picture is, so, and I'll show you just in a minute. He's got on here, the, the applicant is two feet from the corner. To the left of this photo, and I can show you in just a minute, there's an extension of the house that's another two feet, so that's where we're getting four feet from the front elevation. And then the picture on the right is showing what the, what the ordinance allows is ten feet from the front elevation. So it's just basically showing the, the two differences of, of, the variance request is the photo on the left, right side. Okay, and here's the other photo. So again, the photo on the left, you can see where that's four feet from the front elevation. So it'd be right just in front of the, I guess where the, the gas, atmos gas hookup is. And then the one on the left, which is what the ordinance allows, it was just a couple feet behind that downspout of the gutter. They also gave us a survey. This is where, this is where Z B A comes into play. So we get a set of plans, and it comes to the front counter, we do the review, and, and then we deny it. So what's, who's their appeal? So it comes to Z B A. So that's kind of everything that we just discussed earlier on the orientation. This is a perfect example of, of how this process. So we looked at it on the cursor here. So on this side, this is, this is easily approved by staff. It meets the ordinance, so the left side is really not in, into play here. That's just an easy stamp approval. The right side, this is where we said at the staff level, we cannot approve because the ordinance says ten feet back. So that's their, that was how that kind of process. So then the next step is then we get ahold of the applicant, we send them an application for, for Z B A. So here we are this evening. Zoning Board of Adjustment Authority, and again, we, we went over this, but it authorizes the zoning board of adjustment to consider and allow waivers to the fence requirements as a special exception. Zoning Board of Adjustment has the following powers, and I'm not going to read all of those, but they're in your staff report. Notification, so we're required by law to send a, because it's a public hearing, to send a notice out two hundred feet all the way around that residence. So we mail out letters, and, and then we also have a notice that goes into the newspaper as well. Section fourteen point oh two, four oh five, zoning board of adjustment subsection for, under meetings, states that all matters before the board of adjustment on matters of appeal, variance, special exception, or other matter, as specified by ordinance, shall be held as a public hearing in accordance with the provision of section fourteen oh two, four oh six. So just for the new, so that's why Mr. Bowman opened the public hearing. So right now, that's, that's in compliance. Staff recommendation, staff recommends the zoning board of adjustment conduct a public hearing and move to deny the request made by homeowner John Schrober. It does require four members of C B A as necessary for approval of the variance and special exception request. The applicant is here, and so this is the time where I normally ask them to come up, and then they, they do that. After the public hearing is closed, so right now, there's no discussion back and forth after the public hearing is closed, then we open it up for questions, and then you've got the opportunity there to, to speak back and forth to either myself or the applicant.
Thank you, I appreciate your time for considering our option that we wanted to go for. If you saw in the picture, there's an A and a B, and where the initial point is, it's basically, what does that take you? Oh, perfect, I can use the, okay, it's okay. So you have A and B. In the A position is where we're asking, and it's six feet forward from where we're allowed to. In the B position, it's right in the middle of a brick wall where, where we're going to replace our windows in about a year from now, a year and a half. We want to add a window to our side office there, and that's going to put a fence post right in the middle where we ought to put our window, and we ought to have a nice side, side window on the side of the house there. So one of the things we'd really like is just to be able to put the fence post up a little bit forward. Second, cosmetically, it just looks a little bit nicer balanced in the yard, however we're going to finish it, and just utilization in the side yard for our dog, and that's also, we'd enjoy that. But a main thing that we generally have a problem with that position is it just puts a fence post right where we plan to put a window, we add that to our house. And we're going to be replacing our windows within about a year or so, a year and a half, trying to get as much life as we can. Leave, our house is just about ten years old, and that's the main thing. It's a really odd spot for that post to be. And we, and what we did choose to do instead of doing a wooden fence, we're going through the expense with a, a company in Westlake, which is Lambert's. They make nice iron rod fencing, we're getting a custom fence made. It's not going to be just a prefab, you assemble it. It's a nice one made just for our land, it's going to slope nicely, and we're trying to do something that aesthetically goes nicely. And if there's a picture, I didn't know, and there isn't a picture, but Chosworth Street, we have some nice trees and everything. It's set back on the straightaway of twenty-one Trophy Club Drive, so we have the little slip roads. So really, nobody really can see that little bit encroachment, other than our neighbor to the left of us, and they're fine with it, and our neighbor on the right is also fine with that, and we notified them within our H O A, and both were okay with this change. So we appreciate your time, your consideration, but that's really, the picture says it all. There's that position B, it puts a fence post in the middle of where we want to put a window.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Schrober. Jackie, has anyone signed up? Obviously not. The time is six twenty-four P M. I now close the public hearing. All right, the floor is open for discussions. Board members, do we have any questions, comments for either the applicant or Mr. Cox?
I did have one thing to add, so I didn't have it on the slides, but in y'all's packet, we have all of those photos that, that the applicant provided. So if y'all have any questions regarding that, even though I don't have it as a slide, we've got the packet here, and we can also refer.
Yep.
If, if need be.
You can see the view from the street very nicely, that it's really discreet.
Any questions?
Mr. Schrober?
Yes.
So we have a letter here from a neighbor. And you, you mentioned that you had talked to neighbors on the left and the right.
Immediate left, left and right, Kesterson's and Saint Deep next to us, yes.
Okay, all right, is, is he aware of the letter?
Not aware of any letter.
The email that Terry sent?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know that we sent.
Well, Terry Kesterson, okay.
Is that, is it okay to share that?
Sure, absolutely.
Well, he may be digesting that. Mr. Cox, I have a question for you with regards to the utility box there and its relation to fencing. Is one of the reasons that you have? Is one of the reasons that you have the utility connections there and the fencing behind it, is that so access so utilities can get into it, or anything to that effect?
Not not necessarily, because we have we have throughout town where it, a lot of times, it just depends on where Atmos wants to hook up. They don't, a lot of times, there's not a rhyme or reason, sometimes it's just from one neighborhood to the other. And you can go through, even like at my own personal house, it's behind the wooden fence. And so it's, you know, it's it's an ordeal. So to answer your question, no, there there's not any rhyme or reason for that per se.
Okay, I was just, you know, just noticing that moving it back would give the utility companies more access to it.
Yeah.
And, you know, kind of giving you a time to.
Smart.
I'm sorry?
Most meters are smart meters.
Yeah.
And so if they've been upgraded, then they can read them, you know.
From the street, yeah. I agree with that, I agree with that.
I can respond whenever you want, I read this.
Go for it.
There's no solid concrete footer, those are little stones that are just placed in the grass. Second, the dog is a sire from the world vice champion, is a Doberman, her father was archangel. We had the dog bred specifically, it's a working dog, we paid a lot of money for the dog. The dog is not a dog that's not controllable, it's an IPO certified certified level dog. Her name is Orca Tahani Von or Tahani, Orca Tahani Von Schwarzkrafft. The dog goes with us to restaurants, different places, it's a twenty-four-hour guardian with my wife when I travel. I have a large company, I have a lot of people, I have a lot of exposure, it's a security dog. The dog is totally controlled, the dog is controlled to the point that it can attack on command, it can sit, it can do different things, the dog is not out of control. We paid a lot of money for the dog, it's a very special dog, so that's a total mischaracterization of the dog. I don't, this is, I find interesting because I spoke with Terry and Sandeep next to us. So he basically set me up just to sandbag me on this and hit me with this. But there is no concrete footer along the edge of that grass there, that would be a violation. And the dog does not run it up and down along the side, it's a working dog. It was bred, I have pictures of it, it was flown, we flew with a trainer from Macedonia, had a two-week handoff, personal commands, all different things about working with the dog. And as far as he's saying that a hardship or anything, again, it's simple, it would just be the placement of fence. The other parts in his complaint here, well, the fence is gonna be there anyway. So the fence having a few feet further is not changing what he might characterize about a dog running out of control along the side. That doesn't change that circumstance, it doesn't change anything else here, what he's saying in the position of that six feet forward or backwards. So it the circumstances, there would be a fence, period. It's also instead of the wooden fence that the builder built, I'm putting a nice iron rod fence, it's very nice. We got our trees from Fanning Tree Farm, we paid twenty thousand dollars a tree to have them put in the front, live oaks, which is nicer than the building grade trees we had put in. We have a stone-coated metal roof that we paid sixty thousand dollars for to put on top of our house. It's a high-quality roof, we have a very nice home, we cut our grass, we take care of things. We don't have a problem with our dog.
Yeah.
Barking, so it's just, I'm surprised, but people do that, it's not the first time, I'm familiar that people can do things like that. So I was sort of caught flat on the position with the letter. But in my understanding, after reading the letter, again, whether that fence is six feet forward or backwards, it doesn't change anything about his concerns, even if you said, oh, the concern the dogs get run up and down, that doesn't make a difference there anyway, it doesn't affect anything about the appearance. So it's a functional thing, it does give us a hardship, and that's what our petition is, is just the placement of that post is just an odd position. If we have to go there, we'll go there, we'll respect your decision either way. But if there was something that, there was something wrong with that, we would have been cited for throwing something concrete along the side. We're not cited, we have no violations on place on file with us, we have no complaints on the record. So again, this is just something thrown out there. And Terry does, he works for Energy Encore. He does zoning and placement, how to get approvals for an energy company, he knows the procedures. So he knew how to present this in a way that sort of comes in, but if you notice, he didn't present any supporting evidence with it. And I supported very clear photos to demonstrate the clarity of what I'm trying to say. So that's why I would have in response to what they're saying, he says here, again, still doesn't make any impact if you felt that the dog or you felt the dog was barking.
Sure.
Doesn't make a difference in that position of.
Yeah, and and honestly, all of that really, I could care less, right? It's just the next door neighbors against it.
Yes, which I, which is if he chooses to, it's his right, it's his home. But other than that, I just don't care for the mischaracterization of the dog.
I understand that.
I I have pictures of her, and again, her father was archangel, and he was world vice champion twice in the whole world. And as a pedigree dog, you're talking fifty, sixty thousand dollars to get a dog like that trained and certified. So it's not a dog that just runs around chaotically.
Anybody else?
I guess I I. Go ahead.
Being the newbie, Matt. In your PowerPoint presentation, under appeals and limitations, you said that the ZBA's authority is limited by law, it cannot amend or override established ordinances.
Correct.
So are we overriding an established ordinance with this?
So this is, this falls under a special exception, is this is a specific case, and I'm happy that you brought that point up. It it's there for the reason that we don't use the word precedence. So each case isn't, should come as an individual case, and so you will get, ZBA gets a lot of fence requests. And so and so the reason that that statement is in there is that you don't get the mindset, well, we've, we always approve these. And so because we we approved this one last month and we need to approve this one. So that's that's the reason for that. Your your decision is specifically for this address, this particular case, and doesn't affect another one that comes down the road. That's that's the point that that's trying to make, is you're not amending any ordinance. The ordinance for ten foot back still stands, and so you're just specifically giving this case, you know, either approval or denial for this specific circumstance. Does that does that help?
And that took care of my second question on precedent, so.
Yes.
So thank you for that. Mr. Schuber?
Yes.
It says that we need to identify hardships or that type of thing. Explain to me again what the hardship is with this. And I thought I I thought I heard you say that that you would be flexible and could go either way.
Except with, I, the key is I respect the procedure, so was, I can go either way, so I'm being heard. My desire, my time, my effort to put this together, to meet with you, is my desire is position A. With whatever you guys decide, I just wanted to be respectful upfront, saying that I'm not gonna sit here and say, you guys agree or you disagree. I'm getting an opportunity, it's an appeal, it's an exception, I'm asking for a variance, there's a rule, it's in place, it is what it is. I appeal to your consideration to consider that position B, you can see very clearly, is square right in the middle of that area of where I could put a window. So I would like to put a window without having a fence post right there, if I can. And to try and put it back further, it just then squeezes things, it just shortens everything and makes it all different. So my my request is if I could, put it to position A, and that's why I took the time to prepare it. But when I made that statement, to say that it doesn't do me an inconvenience, it does do me an inconvenience. But even if it does do me an inconvenience, I respectfully appreciate your time and consideration, and I will respect, without being upset or anything, whatever you decide. So it's, I really, because you guys have a lot of choices, and the fact that you're taking the time to hear me, I appreciate that itself.
Other comments? I I guess, you know, I I hear the hardship of the window. And and I'm not challenging you on it. The challenge I have with future projects is future projects oftentimes don't get completed. And or, you know, it just doesn't happen. And to be making a decision based on a future project, I have a challenge with, sir. And and that is is why I'm I'm a little hesitant on this on this, making an exception when in the current state of the the property, that's not a hardship. And so I guess this is more of a conversation between the board members and and not to to be engaged here. But that's where my head is right now.
May I mention also, for history, it's a stone-coated beautiful metal roof, high quality on top of the house with cop cluster, custom-made copper finials on top. I have a gas generator put in on the side, I put two trees in the front from Fanning Tree Farm, at twenty thousand dollars a piece, that's forty thousand dollars. If you've seen some of the other pictures, I have those big tall crepe murals on the side. I make a considerable investment in the property historically, to say that I'm not gonna continue. And again, having a custom iron fence made is again another demonstration of, here's my track record of investing and doing something in the property. And I don't want to replace the windows too prematurely, but I'm at the point where it's at almost the ten-year mark, and these are vinyl windows. And we do that, that's when I said, okay, perfect time, when we pull that out, we can put that new window in. And that's the only reason why there isn't a window there to begin with, is just because of the timing, I'd like to do the windows for the entire house at the same time. So the only thing I'm trying to mention is, it's not a thing to itself, but what I have to help contribute to this is what is the historical track record of what I've done with this property over years, demonstrating I do go forward with putting an investment in, I do improve the property. It's not just saying, I've never done anything, so I'm gonna do this, and I have nothing. I have a history of demonstrating I consistently put something into the home. So it's consideration, I recognize what you're saying.
Appreciate it, I I think unless we.
I did have one more question, for the windows that you plan on putting in, you're putting like a big window?
Yes.
So I was gonna ask, could the fence go further back if you just put like a small three-foot window?
It's gonna be a big window, I work at home, I'm self-employed, so that front area is an office. And I actually like to have daylight, so I would like to have, on that side, it's very nice, there's light that can come in. I would really so much enjoy having a nice window and have more light come in, and it would be very enjoyable. So I definitely want a full window on the side.
Does your office plan go from where that that window is all the way to the front?
Yes.
Okay, according to to one of the pictures you've got there, you've got a window on the front side.
Yes.
Right there.
I would like a corner, I have a corner desk in there, a very nice piece of furniture in that. And I have light that comes in from the south, and but there's a whole side there during the day. I would like to have light coming through the side. It's a place that I spend predominantly a huge part of my time and my life working, and I would like to actually see a little bit more greenery on the side, I'd like to have some more light. And that's partly why we're trying to, you know, do everything with the side of the house there and so on.
With the big window, the gutters right there, would that be moved?
Gutter's easy to move, yeah, we already checked that.
I was gonna say, it looks like it's in a French drain, so that might be a little bit.
That's easy, yeah, the gutter's easy to place, so that was an issue. And we looked at where the position is in the gas meter and where the width is. And the gas meter with the gas line does not come into consideration where the window's gonna be. So that was actually where we could place it, we can't put something to the front. So if we had something here where B is, I really can't put something in the other position, because there's a gas line there. So I'd have to change the gas line for the house and everything else. That was something we did think, but that was pointed out, there's a lot more to that gas line, how that runs up through the house. So the other position and also the size of the window, that's where we're wanting is to accommodate, and we can move that gutter easily, and we probably have it go right along that fence post cosmetically. And if you can see right here, that little lock table right there, that's the actual lightning protection that we have, the copper that ran down, and we did that very discreetly. And when we also did the copper, we had the lightning protection ran across the roof, and then we had the roof placed on top of it, the stone-coated metal roof, so you can't even see the cabling. We we went through a lot of extra steps to make things look discreet, and yes, the gutter would be moved.
Would there be, I guess, could you put the fence where the gutter is? Like, is there a reason to have it in front of the meter versus the revert behind the meter? I know you're trying to have the window as far forward as you can, but.
If the gutter, there is, if we could, we could, let's see, where is that, on the side? So you're saying someone like over here have the fence?
Yes, where the gutter would be, I know it's still in from ten feet.
From here, if if we could move up, this is the area that we really want a window. So having it right here or something, that's something I I could throw, I can consider, I think that would work in the window, because we're not gonna really, this gas meter where that goes in, that's one of our boundary zones. So that's not moving, so if I have a fence close to that, I prefer not to see the edge of the fence at the window. I prefer that, but that would avoid the fence being right in the middle of my window.
That's, well, I guess that still brings a problem, it's still within the ten feet, so I guess.
It it would still be within your ten feet, so if it would, instead of being here, this this is, this is four feet, and that is eight feet off the corner, so you're talking a six-foot difference here.
Yep.
So that's about three feet there, so it's, you're shifting it three feet or so ballpark, is what you're saying. I didn't think of that, but that would, because I'm not gonna have a window where the gas line goes up, and that's where the actual the gas meter goes up, right about there, I think that that incorrect where that line is there. So, you know, running something close to that, but it would put the fence right to the edge, but that would still, if if I even have that at least, that's an improvement over having a fence post right in the middle of the window, and the window's half and half.
Or I guess the other option would be to sit, to move it, put the window in and have the fence between the two windows, the the current window that is there and your office window.
Oh, you mean from here to here?
Yes.
There's a dining room wall here, there's a there's a wall, so that's the edge of the dining room, it comes up to about here. And that's where we were starting to look at where we'd have this going along here. So this is a dining room area, and then right around here is a wall. And that's where we wanted to work to put a window in over here. And then I have the front corner here, is where I can put a little chair, I think my little printer, and I have my desk back over here, and I have a nice view looking out the whole side of the window, which would be very nice.
I guess maybe I have a question of, wouldn't it be a lot easier to move the desk or things to face your other office window, instead of putting a fence and then changing, putting in a window, you know, just.
Well, we face forward the street, it already does face that. But just the light, there's only a certain amount of light that comes in through there. So it's just that's, I would just like a sense of more daylight, I sit there all day long. And it just, I would enjoy, you know, just a little bit more nature, greenery to see things. It's a lovely area, being on Trophy Club Drive, we can actually have the window, I can have my window open, and it's not super loud when cars go by, because it's so far offset, it's nice and quiet, I get a breeze. And I also would like a window, because I can get a little bit of a cross breeze coming through there, so I can close the little French doors. And I would like just to get a little bit of a breeze coming through sort of one window. I close the door so I don't warm up the whole house, so I I just like the the fresh air. And if I had another window, I could just, the air would flow through a little bit, get a bit of a breeze, it would just. It's, I I wanted to have a window all along for a long time, and it's just, but I, when I was gonna put the fence in, I was realizing where the fence can go, and I just realized where that post would go.
So what if what if the fence, we've got a ten-foot line at where B is?
Yes.
And that's in the middle of the fence. What if you went twelve feet and moved the fence behind where you plan to put the fence, uh, put the window?
Where the dining room wall would be?
On the back of the dining room?
That's where I was talking about.
Oh, okay.
That just pushes the whole side of my yard back and everything.
You're talking, you're moving, you're moving the side of the yard back six feet?
Yeah.
And you're you're running it up forty-five feet from where the current fence is.
Correct, so if we have, okay, so the the side yard here.
Right.
Okay, is on the back, if, I mean, I want it in the back, a pool or anything like that, I can put, but this is just a side yard functional for us. And again, if it goes here, that, there's only a small difference when I'm allowed. So it's six feet, or, yeah, six feet, that's six feet from here, so it's about there. So it's not a big difference on the overall length of this, but then to try to get past the next thing and then pass the dining room window, I'd be pushing way back over here, I'd be really driving the fence back like fifty percent. I mean, I just, I don't wanna shorten my whole side yard, it makes the side yard not very functional.
And how does the fence add function to it? What would that area be used for?
That's where we can play ball, we can with the dog, and we can have her sprint and run. A working dog, you can't take to a dog park. The main reason, not because the dog is hostile, it's because the dog stands down. So that when other dogs see the dog under control, and it's sitting reserved and not engaging or doing what a dog's gonna do, because it's under control, other dogs misread that. And so what you have to do is you have to work the dog separate from an open area of just dog going freely.
And so what you have to do is you have to work the dog separate from an open area of just dog going freely, because the dog's not in that mode. And that's, the other dogs aren't going to read that correctly. So Trophy Club Park does have that one little gated area, but you have a little spot for one fenced area, but that's almost next to impossible to get. So one of the things we do, just for the exercise, is we walk the dog twice a day. We do the commands with the dog. But one of the things is, we need to have her do sprints and different things. And that would be a great little side area for her to do her sprints. And again, she's fenced in, and in Trophy Club, you can't have your dog off leash. So I can't have her in the front yard doing sprints, and I can't hold a leash and do a sprint with her. So this is a contained area where we can have the dog do sprints and so on. Cutting that whole thing into a half just means, you know, whatever we wanted to do in the back and put a pool or something down the road, we just, we have no future position to do anything. And we do, you know, these are all things we're thinking about how we make our limited amount of space in our property work. And when we first moved here, we thought this would be a temporary home. And we love Trophy Club, we love the parks, we love the walking, we love the, the way you guys care for the community, everything. And we decided to keep this as our home. So now what we're doing is we're just putting more money into our house, and we're making our house our permanent home.
Board members, any comments?
I, yeah, you know, um, boy. I love my dog, love for him to run, and I hear you about building a dog run, which is what you're, you know, in fact, you're building there. And, you know, I, I don't know if the neighbor is, is envisioning that, or if, what? I'm, I'm still hesitant on, on this. I haven't, I haven't heard anything to change my mind that, that this is the six-foot that we're, we're talking about. Or even if it's 12-foot between, you know, moving it to, to between the, at the dining room wall, if you will. I haven't heard anything yet that makes me change my, my inkling right now. Unless a board member can give me something to, or anything.
I'm just trying to see where the harm is. I mean, does it take from the community, the aesthetics? No. It doesn't, I don't, from the curb appeal, it's not going to affect the town of Trophy Club or the aesthetics. It's not going to change anything in the characterization, if you take the full characterization was in the letter. It doesn't change anything in the impact of the characterization whatsoever. I'm not trying, I, I'm not recognizing, I realize the boundary point, it's a, it's, that's why we're asking for the variance. But I'm not seeing anything in the words an adverse, where people say visually that's affecting the way things appear in the town of Trophy Club. I don't see where that's affecting anything if that's a dog run on the side, we use it. If it's shortened by a few feet, it's still a dog run area. It's still that part. But those weren't the reasons for the ask for the variance. The request for the variance was because the placement where the fence post is going to be in relation to where we want to put a window. Otherwise, it wouldn't, you know, that's, that's the main part of what I'm looking at. But the other thing is to say no against it, I don't see where that's putting a impact adversely. If anything, we're taking the wood fence, which is not that good-looking, and we're placing it with a very pretty fence. It costs a lot more money. And we're investing in the property to improve the curb appeal for the whole town of Trophy Club as a whole. So I'm, I'm not seeing that we're taking away from Trophy Club. I'm seeing if anything, we're balancing, we're adding something that preserves what makes Trophy Club, which we appreciate that you helped preserve, and that's why, again, whatever you guys decide, I'll respect. Because I do appreciate the Trophy Club does preserve the value for my own benefit. So, um, that's the only, so when, I do recognize when you're saying that, but I'm not seeing anything from that that is negatively impacting. Or, again, if you take the full gravity of the letter, it doesn't change anything within the letter. So the letter is sort of benign within the decision points. And then is there anything with the fence there or in the other spot? Does it affect curb appeal? Does it affect appearance of the thing? Is it impeding anything? Is it done tastefully? And so the only thing that does stay is, it does give me a little bit of a hardship. Can I work around it? Yes, that's, if things are what they are, I have to do what I have to do. And I would respect that either way. But does it give me a hardship? It does. And that's why I took the time to appeal for a variance.
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
I'm sorry?
I appreciate your time.
Appreciate it. Okay. Guys, we have a motion. Board members, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I make a motion to decline the request.
Do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second, okay. All in favor of denying case ZBA 25-005-2721 Trophy Club Drive? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. You've got two nays, and, and, so what we got now? We got a split group here.
Got to have four.
Got to have four, it's a deny.
It's what?
It's a deny.
So it's still denied?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
I appreciate everybody's time and consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Motion fails, is not approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Okay, that was fun. Not really. Agenda item number four, consider approval of the September 11th, 2025 ZBA minutes. Is there a motion to approve minutes as presented?
I'll move.
You weren't even here.
I read them.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries, the December, September 11th, 25 meetings are approved. The time is 6:53, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. And I, sorry, I know you had a...